Everybody to the Ottawa City Commission Study Session. Do we have any public comments?
We have none registered.
Thank you. Commissioners on the items to be placed on the regular city commission agenda, we have our minutes from the September twenty fifth study session. Did you have a chance to review that? You okay with moving that on to Wednesday's agenda?
Yeah.
Great, thank you. All right, items for presentation and discussion, item A is an ordinance amending section four dash six oh four and four dash three one six of the minutes for code on liquor sales. Attorney Finch, good afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. At your last meeting, you had public comment about the beginning time for Sunday sales under local ordinance, and so I told you, you asked me to draft an ordinance for you, this is that ordinance. There are two parts of the code that have to be amended, one concerns the sale of liquor in the package. The other concerns the sale of enhanced cereal malt beverage. Consumption not on premises. So these two sections being amended right now, the the time is just matching up with state statute, which is nine AM. You'll note that the the bill is cited there in the warehouse clauses on the ordinance in twenty twenty one, the legislature took up House Bill twenty one thirty seven. It was a a bill that had a number of changes to provisions regarding alcohol, but one of them was to expand the hours for sales on Sundays, which had formerly been restricted to noon to eight PM to now nine to eight PM, and I think the issues raised in the legislature at the time were similar to the ones that were brought to you last week by liquor store retailers here that whether it was football games or other activities on Sunday, the ability to be able to purchase prior to noon was something that was important to consumers. And at the time, I think a lot of the testimony was from those border counties in places like the Kansas City metro where customers could go across the state line and hours were different, more expansive than they were here. You'll know that in the statutes that are cited forty one to seventeen forty one twenty nine eleven talk about expanded hours. Ottawa is technically a community that has expanded its hours, you did that through the process of Sunday sales. You have not restricted those hours back, so you were still expanded, and this is a simple change to the hours of operation. You're not expanding the hours into Sunday, so that that word expanded is a statutory one. And so I just wanted to avoid confusion. As opposed to prior ordinances that you passed that had to be published twice in a sixty day waiting period and the potential for it to go on the ballot. I find nothing in the state statutes that would require that for a simple change from noon to nine in accordance with the state statutory change. This is not the traditional notion of expanded hours, which was adding Sunday sales, so. And if that that all stand for any questions you might have.
Commissioners, any questions for our city attorney? If not, Commissioner, what would you like to do with this ordinance? Yeah, we will move this on to Wednesday's agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item B is the update from the Ottawa Recreation Commission or ORC Executive Director. Good afternoon, Levi, how are you?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners, thanks for having me. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all. You know, we thought it might just be worth having a quick conversation and giving an update on ORC programs and also kind of looking forward to the future and discussion our our partnership with the the city of Ottawa, so. I'll just kind of jump right into it. You all should have received a little bit earlier this morning, a a presentation with more information, but I'll just break that down here. As far as ORC with our different programs, we host a variety of different youth sports, adult sports. We have fitness and wellness programs, we obviously have aquatics programs, use youth programs like our summer school, summer camp, after school care, and then various special events like breakfast with Santa, self-defense class, hunter safety, and a lot more, so. Within the last year, we've actually added two whole different two different departments or categories of programs, whether that be our senior programs, they'll they'll take day trips, go to dinner theaters, other excursions like museums and trips kind of outside of Ottawa. And then another program department that we call our alternative programs. Those are basically non-sport type programs, so painting classes, DIY crafts, cookie decorating, just to name a few, so. Within those programs, we see about eleven percent of our overall registrations come in our youth sports. Thirty-seven percent of our registrations fall within that fitness and wellness category. Six percent of our programs are made up by aquatics, swim lessons and aquaside type type programs, and then twenty-nine percent of our overall registrations fall within summer camp and after school care. So if there's any questions kind of throughout the way, just stop me and be happy to chat about some of that. So when we talk about different programs as well, we do have some specific things that we partner with the city of Ottawa, different departments and staff on. Just to name a few of those with the fire department, we have our summer spray down, which is always a fun little event for our summer camp kids, they bring a truck out and very softly sprayed the kids down with the hose and not the goal is to not break skin on. Not to our chief on the spot there, but the police department also helps us out, one of our big events is the the bike safety event, so we actually bring all second grade students in USD two ninety into the Gopper Building, and they go through training, whether that be with EMS, the police department, and and some volunteers, all of those students walk away with a free helmet, so we like to encourage obviously the safety of that activity with with, you know, all the great trails and opportunities kids have in Ottawa to ride bikes. Memorial Auditorium, they assist us with our summer camp talent show, it's always a a fun event every year. Getting to see those kids get out and whether it be sing or dance, or we had a kid that his talent was counting to forty last year, so that was it was a good time there, but yeah. And in the Ottawa Library, obviously, we partner with a lot of different programs with them, and we hosted a a pool party this year, kind of our highlight event with the library. So facilities, our facilities, really what what we see a lot is there's a misconception when it comes to facilities in town. Per state statute, recreation commissions themselves cannot own property. So all the facilities that you see in town are owned by a different agency, whether that be the city or the school district. The top four facilities there are all city facilities that we operate and maintain and then provide programming at. When I say maintaining and operations, that's all of our staffing, it could be mowing or other different types of maintenance, getting fields prepped for baseball and softball games. So we have those four facilities, the Orlis Cox Sports Complex with eleven baseball softball fields. We have a couple different maintenance shops there, and then two different access points for one of the trails. We operate the city pool. It's typically open Memorial Day weekend through the first week before school starting. We obviously employ quite a few high school students, I think we were out of twenty-five staff, I I think twenty of them were high school students in this last year, so. We get a lot of questions from people about why is the pool not open later? The the simple answer to that is we we simply can't staff it without having lifeguards there, so when those kids start school, all of our high school kids this last two years were in extracurricular activities. So they were playing sports, they were in clubs, things that took up their time outside of school. So the the simple fact of it is, is we really don't have time that we can keep the pool open to people. If adults want to apply to be lifeguards, we are always open to applications there, but we just haven't had any luck getting anybody really over the age eighteen to sign up to be a lifeguard and make nine dollars an hour, so. The Forest Park Fields, we also maintain those two fields for softball and baseball used during the summer, and then during the fall season, we utilize those fields for flag football. And then the industrial park soccer fields, those are northwest of of Lincoln Elementary, we use those for just practices for our our youth soccer teams. Facilities that we operate in conjunction with USD two ninety is the Gopper Building, twenty-two thousand square foot indoor rec facility that has offices, different fitness space, a gym and a meeting room. We utilize the soccer fields at Lincoln Elementary, there's six game fields on there currently with some opportunity to expand. We have our soccer seasons in the fall and the spring, so those are utilized pretty heavily. And then we also, it's worth noting, our our relationship with USD two ninety extends beyond those two facilities. We have relatively open access to other gyms and soccer fields and facilities to help us expand our programs. If it wasn't for other gyms within the school district, we wouldn't be able to have an adult volleyball league or an adult basketball league. We would have to realistically limit the amount of teams we have in our basketball league because we utilize the middle school for a lot of practices and things, so. We do appreciate our our partnership there and and the ability to expand our programs with other facilities in town. On those facilities, we have two full-time staff members that are responsible for maintenance and and kind of operations. In the summers, we'll hire four to five seasonal employees, those are usually again high school kids. But from top to bottom, all those facilities that we have, realistically, they're they're managed and maintained by two guys. Big undertaking there for them. Moving on to kind of some data and some some numbers for you all. Overall, year to date, between facility visits and program registrations, we've had just under a hundred thousand people impacted by those two means, you can see our pool numbers are, you know, declining over the last few years. The Gopper Building visits and program registrations, we anticipate being increases compared to last year. And then there's also one thing I wanted to mention on there, we, at the beginning of this year, purchased a vehicle counter for Orlis Cox and that sports complex. Year to date, we've seen just under fifty-three thousand vehicles enter that complex, that's not people, that is just vehicles. And if we look at the timeframe of about three PM to eight PM, we've seen about thirty-three thousand vehicles just in that timeframe year to date, so. People are there, they're using that facility at a high rate, I think we could all drive by and and see it empty, you know, a lot of the time, but it is a really valued facility here in our community, and I know a lot of people here have kids that play high school baseball or club softball and those activities that utilize that facility as well.
Levi, I know it's not a significant decline, but do you, do you have any opinion on why you might see a decline in the pool attendance?
Well, I I'm I'm glad you asked, so we in our program numbers, we're seeing after COVID, we've kind of increased across the board to get back to twenty eighteen twenty nineteen numbers. The pool was kind of the opposite of that, we saw a steep, I say steep, but we're talking a few hundred people. We've seen, we saw an increase after COVID and then it slowly kind of declined. I don't necessarily have a reason for why that declined, I know we're, you know, we're back to where the twenty nineteen numbers are, but that's not necessarily a good thing. I would note with this year, we had seven closures. Two of those were multi-day closures. So our numbers are a little bit lower, I would estimate that has something to do with it. If, I think if we looked at overall average attendance on a daily basis, not including the days we were closed, we were like four people lower than where we were last year, our average attendance this year was like a hundred and sixty-seven a day, and last year was a hundred and seventy-one or seventy-two. Along those same lines, we've estimated we need roughly two hundred and thirty people a day to come into the pool in order for us to cover our staffing costs. This year in twenty twenty-three, we hit that number about twenty percent of our open days, so. The anomaly that pools are moneymakers and and huge in the profit margin is just not true. All of our programming is really what helps us offset our operational expenses, so. Whether that's swim team rentals, birthday parties, swim lessons, those things help us recuperate some of that money where we don't see people visiting the facility.
Is that include concession sales?
Yeah.
In the break even?
Yeah. In the past, we operated the concessions ourselves. Within the last, I think, five or six years, we've contracted that out to a third party, and we recoup, I think fifteen twenty percent of whatever their revenue is. Helps us cut down on the expense of it, but obviously you you could make more money if we operated ourselves, it's just a little bit more difficult to.
With staffing?
Staffing, yeah. We, until recent years, have had trouble even finding lifeguards, so I can't imagine concession stand workers and staff to that level.
Well, I mean, and to the point of covering expenses, I think it's your expense, I mean, there's still additional expense that the city is incurring to keep the pool open.
Yeah.
So I mean, it's not even covering expenses, which is a misnomer.
Yeah. And I kind of outlined responsibilities for our operating agreements later, but just to hit on that, you know, the city does provide the water and chemicals and overall kind of maintenance of the facility from a water chemistry standpoint, so those costs are not recouped through our operation.
And the the rule of thumb is, is if, from concessions and rentals and pool passes, if you cover your personnel cost, that's considered a highly efficient and effective municipal pool.
I think we were relatively close to that within a couple thousand dollars this year, so obviously not to the standard that we'd like to be, but we were, we were still pretty close on what we had. And that's with adding another lifeguard within the rotation based off of where we saw injuries and rescues happening, we put another lifeguard into the rotation in that specific zone, basically to cover a fifteen square foot area because that's where all our rescues were happening, so.
And did you see a decrease with that?
We did, yes. In twenty twenty-two, off the top of my head, I'm I'm not sure the exact number, I think we had fifteen rescues in twenty twenty-two. Ten or eleven of those were right by the blue slide. We have seen that the kids get so excited to go up the big slide, they go down and don't come up sometimes, so. We've put a lifeguard there specifically really just to watch the dispatch of the water. And rescues went down significantly this last year, we also worked with the Parks Department to try to put big letters saying, you know, deep water, six-foot dispatch kind of thing, and and I think that helped a lot to to cut down on those rescues, so. And then, you know, the the teenage crowd jumping over each other and hitting their heads on the side of the pool and all the fun stuff, but it's hard to limit that. So moving on to like Commissioner Kayler mentioned, we have two contractual kind of operation agreements with the city of Ottawa. One for the Orlis Cox Sports Complex, another for the city pool. Reviewing the first agreement, we have the ORC kind of in summary is responsible for the management, control, maintenance and just overall operation of the Orlis Cox Sports Complex. Some of the details in that, you know, obviously scheduling play, scheduling programs, also mow and pick up trash, provide custodial care, operate concessions, all of that while providing staffing levels to make sure that, you know, the facility is in is in good shape for the the community. We pay for the electricity used at the ballpark, and the city covers the cost of the water at the ballpark. Looking at city responsibilities, like I mentioned, covering the water usage, applying and maintaining the roads and parking lots at the facility, maintaining the sewer and the water mains, installing light bulbs and light fixtures purchased by the ORC, and then providing trashcans and and disposal services there as well. So when we talk kind of maintenance of that facility, again, between the two, anywhere from two to six employees that we have out there, we start to see traffic pickup really towards the end of February, whether that's with club teams or the high school starting. And we will probably see traffic decline towards the end of October, end of November, so really we will have people out there at the fields utilizing those facilities really up to ten months out of the year. We have the universities out there practicing a couple nights a week this year, and just overall kind of practices, games and general community use happens outside of our season, the ORC season runs from May to June, and then outside of that, it's it's really just community use out there. On that same topic, I want to provide just a little rundown of of different CIP expenses that the ORC has has taken on in the last fifteen years. A lot of the buildings you see in restrooms, irrigation, scoreboards, a lot of that was was funded by ORC. We're in the ballpark of around four hundred thousand dollars in the last fifteen years towards improvements. You know, some of the bigger stuff, you know, chain link fencing especially is one thing that really has gone unchanged since the facility was built to our knowledge. We do what we can with the funds that we have to replace, you know, the backstops, the nets, the field surfaces themselves, but there are just some things that we do have difficulty trying to get to on an on an annual basis. We built a new batting cage in this last year, thanks to the Kansas City Royals Foundation. They provided us a grant to help with that, and we continue to explore opportunities like that that'll help us with, you know, capital improvement costs and.
Does I need to use it for practice?
They probably should.
They should.
Yeah, yeah.
Are we interested in putting a stadium there, I guess is the question.
Talking about.
So. So with the, moving on to the pool, opportunity, or excuse me, responsibilities are similar at the pool. The the biggest difference between the two contracts is the staffing at the pool, so we're obviously responsible for training, staffing, supervising and paying staff in a way that is adequate for a safe operation. You know, obviously, there are ways you can cut costs and and you could have one less lifeguard, but is it really worth it in the in the scheme of having a safe facility? And those are things that we, you know, consider. Again, recharge in charge of scheduling and cleaning the facilities with custodial care, the pool house, the bath house and light fixtures for those security lights as well. When we move on to the city's responsibilities, the pool, they help with scheduling trash collection, as we mentioned earlier, the city furnishes all water, electricity and chemicals at the pool, which is, you know, certainly a substantial cost in itself. And then the other thing to kind of hit on is is replacing the different pool equipment, whether that's plumbing systems, ladders, lifeguard stands, diving boards, those kind of things that are considered fixtures of the facility itself. So before I move into kind of the future of what we're looking at, are there any kind of questions on what we've reviewed thus far?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Still got forty-five minutes. Okay. So a as as most of you probably know, we started a strategic plan earlier this year. We are probably a month or so away from wrapping that up and finalizing that plan. There are a few things that I wanted to hit on with you all as we talk about the future of the commission and the community recreation in general. To start, we hosted fourteen different key leader interviews, that was ORC Board, different city commissioners, different school board members. And we also had some focus groups, we had fifty-four individuals in our focus groups. And then we had an online community survey, which we received just shy of a thousand responses on the community survey. So in our opinion and and based on our consultant, using those three methods, we have a pretty good idea of kind of what the community needs and desires are moving forward into the future and you know, it'll be something that we work for with our partnerships with the school district and the city to help kind of reach those goals. So reviewing some of the feedback from the leadership interviews and focus groups, the strengths of the ORC, people appreciated the variety of programs, our youth programs like after school and summer camp, our sports, they see that there's been an effort to improve community relations and with different staff, and also with our program affordability, obviously being a a tax-based organization, our goal is to make sure that people can participate in our programs and not price anybody out of them, so we we take pride in trying to remain affordable. You know, obviously within our means. Areas for improvement are kind of areas that the community would would like to see expanded on or or improved on. Obviously, there's a more need for non-sport programs, when we talk sports, we're talking pre-K really to eighth grade, and then the rest of the demographic of the community is falls outside of that. So there's there's a desire for more things, not sports. Also with a desire for more or better aquatic facilities, whether that's an outdoor pool or splash pads, the community would like to see those things. A a potential expansion on the Gopper Building, and I'll touch on that a little bit here in the future or here later. And then improvements on whether that be the Orlis Cox Complex, the soccer fields, more funding or a better understanding of the responsibilities between the ORC and our two partners at the school district in the city. So when it comes to important facilities for our community, these are the highest value facilities, things people enjoy and appreciate and would like to see improved as well. To no one's surprise, the outdoor pool is our number one will-getter there. And then we also saw value at the the fitness center or the the Gopper Building with the overall fitness space, recreation space, the walking track. And then two facilities that are currently not offered in our community with an outdoor splash pad and an indoor playground, which are becoming more popular. It's literally a playground that's inside, so people would like to see that, I guess. As far as most important programs, obviously, like we mentioned earlier, the bulk of our programming comes in our fitness and wellness, and people want to see more of that, as well as youth sports, and then our non-traditional programs there at the bottom. Moving on to priorities for the future, a lot of this is redundant because the data is just kind of similar, no, no matter what question we we had. The two things that I like to mention with a priority for expanding the Gopper Building, in our analysis and assessment with the consultant, we saw that the Gopper Building now has been programmed to the point where there's not a whole lot of opportunity for someone to just come in and have open play in the gym or utilize the back room for rentals and parties and things. So whether we expand the building or find other opportunities to free up space in the Gopper Building will be a focus for us moving forward. That, again, will tie into more fitness programs and more non-traditional things. And then there were a couple mentions of, you know, improving the sports field, whether that be the baseball fields or soccer fields here locally as well. And obviously overwhelming support for a new outdoor pool. I don't think anything, none of us knew in this room. So I guess to wrap up, the ORC, our kind of goal for the future here is obviously to seek ways we can improve our programs and services to meet the needs of the community, and we also want to continue expanding our programming, whether that be with the capacity of our current facilities or to find more facility space, and then a goal to review our operating agreements and really focus on a collaborative future with maintenance and improvements at at least facilities, so. With all that being said, I I do want to thank you all and thank the city for the support that we've received from you, I think recreation in this community is in a far better space, and I I look forward to what the future that looks like. So I'll answer any questions.
Yeah, thanks, Levi, I appreciate you doing this, I also appreciate giving us updates once in a while you come in here, and I I appreciate that, so. Really good, important to have. And now, as a city, though, what can we do for you now? Is there something on your mind or if your wish list that you have that the city shouldn't be paying attention to?
I think a lot of the feedback we received on our strategic plan is a desire for more programming. You know, with that comes, you know, our limitations on space, so. Whether we look for multipurpose space or ways to increase, you know, the number of baseball softball fields in town or splash pads, I think to get to the bottom of that, just collaboration moving forward and seeing how we can work together. I know projects that have a price tag attached to them are more complex to accomplish, but sharing resources and and working together on those type of things, I think we can see a lot more change in the immediate future if we were to work together and whether it be pool money or find different resources to make some of those things happen.
You hit on on your eyes of CIP that four hundred thousand since oh eight, just kind of for people who don't know where the majority of your funding comes from in terms of like taxpayers and the tax base, how that kind of gets to you?
Yep. So statutorily, we were funded or founded as a joint recreation commission, so the city and the school district came together and decided we are going to create a a recreation commission in the town of Ottawa. With that statute, the agency with the higher assessed valuation then levies taxes on behalf of the recreation. So in the in Ottawa's case, and really across the state of Kansas, school districts have bigger boundaries than cities do, so they have a higher assessed valuation. So we receive our tax levy through the school district. Up until probably last year, we were eighty percent tax revenue funded, so a lot of our our funding came from tax revenues. We are going in the opposite direction to generate more revenue internally, so we're about seventy thirty now. Obviously, want to try to continue to grow that so we can generate more revenue to do more. And to not necessarily have to rely on the tax dollars much to for improvements or programs or other things.
Is there a ceiling in which that you cannot go past with your funding?
So currently. We are at a max of six mills for our general fund. And then one or excuse me, five, five general fund mills and one employee benefit fund mills. We can only exceed that should our taxing agency pass a resolution to approve and increase in mill levy.
And how long has that been on this set? Maybe that might be a doctor.
We. Have not raised our mill levy since two thousand one, I believe. And in two thousand one, it was like a half mil for employee benefits, I think, so our general fund though has not changed in over twenty years.
Would it? Improve operations? And give you some more flexibility if you were to roll. The employee benefit fund into the general fund since. That whole. Funding stream was created back. When the legislature was was capping general fund. Expenditure authorities and so creation of the all the various funds were. Was how that was addressed, so. Do you think you might be able to get some some added benefits or some externalities associated with? A six mil increase and and no employee benefits?
So in our particular situation. We pay a hundred percent of employee premiums for health insurance. That has put us in a position where up until this year, we have pulled money out of the general fund to supplement health insurance costs. So I don't know if it's apples to apples if we were to kind of absorb the the general fund and the employee benefits together. In the future, where if we're able to decrease our health health insurance cost and. Then it might be a an option for us.
Thank you. If you figure that out, let us know.
Yeah, I think I've talked with Michelle quite a bit.
I appreciate the fact that you highlight what. You have used out of your budget for capital improvements. And it appears as though the agreement that we have with. O R C is that. You are to be doing general maintenance, but it on on the side that you gave us, it appears as though it's. It may be a little bit more than general maintenance. So I mean, four hundred thousand dollars is, you know, just I have obviously I have a million dollars and. Although that's since two thousand eight, that's still a tremendous amount of funds, so. Is it fair to say that there's some deferred maintenance that has not been done? In some of the facilities that we may have, I mean, probably in all the facilities is what I'm gonna guess. But. Don't want to put words in your mouth, because.
Yeah, I think when you talk my answer, there's always a, you know, what can you do without and what absolutely needs your place? You know, just talking about the chain link fences at Orlos Cox, you know, I think the majority of those fences are thirty, forty years old. And and I don't necessarily want to. Sit here and be like, you know, it's a, you know, the city hasn't done this or done that because I. You know, I would take responsibility that previous directors of the O R C might not have communicated those needs effectively with the city. Or the school district or any of our partners. So that's why I kind of mentioned, you know, moving forward, I I would just want to make sure that there's. The collaboration between us two and. We can make decisions together and. For the overall benefit of the community, I think. I don't anticipate us stopping with these improvements and and certain things. But like I mentioned, I think our resources together have a wider impact than, you know, whatever we're able to accomplish on an annual basis.
But for example, then also, I mean. We as the city utilize, I mean, some of I noticed. And I've noticed several times, I think we probably all have noticed. That since the the big storm that we had, the big windstorm, I mean. You know where limbs are going? Forless Cox and so. You know, I I guess it concerns me a little bit that, I mean, there may be some. Wear and tear on the on the parking there, just because we've got a lot of limbs sitting there and so I'm not sure what's gonna happen and I know you don't know either, but just. To think about, it's a really good partnership that it's nice that we have that facility and that it didn't get in the way of. Anything that was happening at Orlos Cox, that that we do have somewhere for citizens to bring their limbs. Keep the limbs and. Well, you know, whatever it takes, or it's homecoming and we haven't had a bonfire yet, so I mean, we do have the superintendent here, we could maybe make that happen in the next forty eight hours, but or maybe not.
I think you might want to watch what you say about.
They're always on fault, they're always on fault. But speaking of, we do have our superintendent of schools here and he is and the school is obviously a huge partner with O R C too, are there things? That the school district would like to, you know, add to this particular presentation?
I don't think it, I don't think it's my place to. To come in, I mean, the the. City asked, believe I had come in and and talk about what the O R C offers and it's not really about about U S T two ninety, I think what I would say is that we have. A great partnership with with O R C, we work together on a lot of things. Perfect example is the gym floor issue. That we've seen at the middle school in the O R C. Maneuvering a number of things to make sure that our kids have a a space to be at a place that they can continue. The the academics of of physical education in a in a safe spot. Especially on a number of days where well over a hundred degrees during that time. And we, I think we do those things for one another fairly regularly. And I think. And we've had lots of conversations about improving. Just the the quality of life in Ottawa. As a whole, and I think that. You know, together, there are there are lots of conversations, I think, that we could have about how we. We impact one another and and do great things for the people of this community, I think. There's some great leadership, certainly in D O R C right now with Levi. I don't know that that's. I've known a lot, I guess I've known a lot of the directors, I won't be the step we in our shows, but I don't know that we we've seen any of the type of growth that we've seen under Levi in the past twenty years, so I think that's. Certainly be committed. But I also appreciate, you know, the the work that the. That the city does to continue to to give us opportunities to to grow and prosper and I think. To answer Mike's question earlier, I think. Probably from both sides, collaboration and conversations about how we can help one another. Providing very research as far as media is probably all that we can ask at this point. One more thing too, I like to change is the advertising out of the Orlos Cox, we don't have any advertising on the fields out there, but I'm glad we've allowed that now, this must be some little bit of revenue source, is that true?
Yeah, so whether that be the Gopper building or Orlos Cox, any of our facilities, if you see business signs of those facilities. We utilize those funds to help offset for our scholarship program, so anybody. Any family that's on free reduced lunches in the U S T two ninety school district. Their fee to participate in the youth sports is ten dollars. Which is seventy five to eighty percent discount off of a regular fee. It just helps us kind of offset those costs while, again, making sure that we're affordable. We know that our community locally has a. You know, large population of people that are on free reduced lunches and we don't want. You know, forty dollar fee to play basketball and to stand in the way of a kid. Participating, so as we've been able to expand that program, our next. Program that we're gonna tackle with scholarships is swim lessons, so we're gonna put that same fee towards swim lessons. So people can still participate and and get that need because we're seeing. More data come out about the the benefits of swim lessons and especially in low income communities, so good idea, so.
With these, the Orlos Cox centers, do you have a a rough idea on? Out of town, essentially tournaments we host for that out of town people are coming to?
Yeah, we do not do tournaments anymore, it was something that the O R C had done in the past. We had a benefit tournament here, it was actually my first week we start I started, we had a benefit tournament for local family. Incredibly popular and and well ran, since then, we've partnered with a couple. One organization primarily here in town to try to run tournaments and we've had basically three failed attempts to do that with with no registrations. Not to get too deep into it, but the challenge we face is, you know. We're trying to pull people from Johnson County, you know, Casey Metro area to come down to Ottawa to play. I'm not saying it can't be done, but we've just had difficulty recently of of being able to accomplish that.
Do you think that is facilities or just the drive, just getting people outside of the metro?
I think a perfect storm of facilities, amenities and certain. You know. Johnson County just dumped forty million dollars into their baseball complex and. And you know, the fact of the matter is that's where you're heavy, your population, so we would then be asking someone to drive. Forty minutes to an hour to come to a facility that. You know, is what it is, as opposed to staying home and playing in a forty million dollar softball complex. So there's challenges there. It is something that we would like to see, it was in our plan, that people wanted to play at home more often, so we're gonna try to do that, but. That's a, that's an uphill battle, I. Prior to being in recreation, I was a college baseball coach and that was my livelihood regarding tournaments and they are difficult to do, but if you can get them to happen, then. They pay off.
It's tough to compete with.
Yeah.
Multi-field, all turf. Locker rooms. Shade structure for both. Setting teams waiting to play. And spectator. Viewing, so. And you're looking at just for the turf. Portion and lighting about a. One point five to two million, depending upon the price of copper. Per field.
Forty million would be enough.
Well, as you said, I think sixty.
But you'd take twenty, so.
We'd take twenty, thirty million.
I appreciate the fact that you included the agreements in. In your presentation today, I know they weren't embedded within, but we have them and I noticed that they're both about a quarter of a century old. So I wonder if it may not be best practice for us to. It didn't appear and I just quickly looked over, it didn't appear as that we had had something, I mean, I know it renews, but maybe. We need to look at it every five years, really give it a good hard look, because things change. And be willing to shift. If we need to shift. Because I I'm not sure, I mean. Yeah, it's not been looked at since I've been here.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, two thousand nine is a. A long time ago.
Yeah, who was Blake Chorkins?
You know, you mentioned earlier, you thought you you thank the commission for what we've done, but I think the majority of that needs to go to you and your team. As Dr. Cox mentioned, it's been a substantial increase in what happens with the O R C over the last few years, a lot of that's because of. Like I said, you and the and the people that, you know, you've surrounded yourself with. I could only imagine us as commissioners trying to balance our budget on two thousand and one mills. I don't think we could and the city of Ottawa would be without a lot of things. So certainly, as as mentioned before, I think conversations, in-depth conversations with the school district, you know, you guys and us would. Are 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 needed and 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 certainly a must, so. I do appreciate the presentation, a lot of great information.
Missus, do you have any other questions or comments for Levi?
Shuffleboard?
Levi, thank you. Commissioners, item C, we will not be reviewing today, I think they're gathering a little bit more information for us for that item. And we'll put on a future agenda. Item D is comments by our city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Commission, you know, we anticipate presenting the the. Item for the plat. Final plat approval at the next. Study session, which would be following. The. October ninth meeting that's been canceled and then our next regular. Meeting. On Wednesday, the eighteenth, so we're anticipating that presentation being on sixteenth and eighteenth. I'd like to remind everyone that we'll have. A O M A reopening and chamber. Event coming up. The the week of. Blank here. Michelle, do you remember when that is? I want to say the fourth. Ten, thank you, Tuesday, the tenth at from five to seven and. Come look at the. Improvements that have been made and some of those images are included in our. Employee newsletter, so we'll make a point in getting those to our commissioners and we'll have live music and. Beverages available as well. The other item I wanted to just touch base on to let you know that that we are addressing it, which was brought up by Commissioner Skidmore. At the last study session, which was the issues related to circuits eight and ten on. Our at our northeast industrial park area and just wanted to reaffirm that we are collecting data, we are in. Communication with all of our industrial and commercial users out there to keep them apprised, we're currently. Developing a scope of services for analysis with a. Electrical engineering consultant that specializes in in grid and production capacity. That would be more than sufficient to assist us with this endeavor. We also have a three-phase analyzer. Information being collected on both circuits eight and ten and we're working on. Improving our health map integration as well as. Part of that study would also include. With the electrical engineers, our substation configuration and power quality and then also let everyone know too that our electric. Distribution, our line linemen have been out visually inspecting and. Making sure that we don't have any sort of a open. Fuses or that. Our capacitors are functioning properly and in good use, so. Just wanted to pass that along, as I know, there's been reports fairly widespread, both on on our system and. Outside of our system and and other territories, so. It's a complicated. Evolution in order to try and evaluate what's occurring, because there is. Things on both sides of of the power supply of our substation, so. We gotta make sure that the scope's sufficient, we can also. Make certain that we're not damaging our 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 equipment as well. With these, because everything that goes out goes through us, so it's important that. That we address it as expeditiously as possible, but not moving so quickly that we overlook something simple and we want to make sure that. We're collecting all the relevant data that we need. Didn't know if Dan had any anything further to add.
Did a lot of research pulling information out of. Old technology, but it takes a little longer, but.
And then that that concludes my report for today.
Thank you. Comments by city commissioners, Commissioner Graves. Commissioner Kayler.
This is homecoming week for the high school. And. Just as a point of reference, there's gonna be a few blocks that are gonna be shut down on Wednesday. Right after work, five thirty-ish, maybe a few minutes before that. I think second through third. Second, third, fourth. Okay, there you go. Those are the cities, or that's the part of the city that will be shut down for the parade and block party. I, it does start at five thirty, there is a chance that I will be late to that, I'll be supporting my student. At that event, and so if I'm not here right at the start of the meeting. I'll be here as soon as it's over.
Commissioner Clayton.
I just wanted to highlight this past weekend was the Bad Astro ride. Based out of Ottawa and it's it's always cool on those Saturdays to see. How many cars you see around town hours after the ride has ended.
How many cars you see around town hours after the ride has ended, a local restaurants in different places downtown, kind of shopping and. Seeing how the trails really do bring a lot of people into Ottawa. And so I think that's just great and something we want to keep steering into.
Would you really say it that way?
I have no comments either. I have a few announcements, October fourth, this Wednesday. Coffee with a cop, eight AM to ten AM at Starbucks, twenty one sixty South Princeton. Our regular meeting is at seven PM at City Hall, October fourth, this Wednesday also. And then a few of us will be in Wichita this weekend for the League of Kansas Municipalities Annual Conference. Which means we'll have to cancel next Monday study session, so our next study session will be October sixteenth. Is there anything else to come before the commission this evening?
No.